I'd like to call the Board of Trustees meeting together on Tuesday, November 18th, 1:14 at approximately 6:30 PM. In order for everyone to hear, please turn off any noisemakers or silence them. Roll call, please.
Eno.
Here.
Clove.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Delphi.
Here.
Jack Check.
Here.
And Anquest.
Approval of the minutes as published.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Changes, additions, deletions, grammatical remarks, right away. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Comments and correspondence? Any correspondence of note? Comments? Does anybody in the audience care to make a comment about a non-agenda item?
Who is the chuckle back? Is that getting on the tape?
Okay. Moving right along, new village board business items. Item number one, preliminary presentation of the 2015 budget. Juliana, is that something you want to handle?
All right. Well, we have, there've been some slight changes since we published, and we're now looking at a net change of 5.51 percent, up from 5.37.
So it's about a roughly $2,000 difference?
Um, yeah, I think that's right. The, for capital projects, we're looking at $190,000 this year, down from 347 last year. What else would you like to know?
What was your percentage increase?
Percentage increase, 5.51.
Five one.
Okay, so the budget was properly noticed, it was published.
Correct.
We've had the period that was required for notice.
Yep.
Publishing the papers, et cetera.
Yes.
So I-
It was noticed on November 1st.
Okay. So I will move to a public hearing on the proposed 2015 budget, and after which we will consider a motion to adopt Resolution 302-111814, adopting the 2015 annual budget capital improvement program. So I'm now open the floor for a public hearing. If you wish to speak, please stand up and tell us your name and address, where you live. If we can't hear you, I'll ask you to come up to the microphone. We now declare the meeting open for public hearing. Anybody care to speak about the budget? Twenty ones? Twenty twice? There being no one that wants to discuss in the public hearing any budget, I will not close the public hearing at 6:33 PM, roughly. Then make a motion to adopt Resolution 302-111814, adopting the 2015 annual budget and the capital improvement program.
I'll second it.
Any discussion by the trustees?
Looks good. A lot of work went into it, I'm sure.
All have time to look at it, all work through the committees, got a month to ask questions, right? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work. Thank you, Juliana, for your hard work. Consider a motion to adopt Resolution Number 298-111814, authorizing the sale of a portion of parcel number 181-21-0501A, located at 2362 Mill Road to Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Motion by Leo.
Second.
As you are aware, for the 6F conversion process, as a result of DOT taking some portion of our land for use of the road construction project here and around the marina and other parks, they are required to purchase property in a like location that's similar to the property that can be converted to the same use as the property that was being taken. The Mill Road parcel across the street from the Old Helms location, now the waterfront part, a portion of that is what they want to purchase, and that purchase will then be turned into parkland, and a parking lot will be put in that area. And they are offering, if I have this correct, $383,000, I believe is the dollar amount, for that parcel. It's not the complete parcel, there's another resolution for that, but it's a significant portion, it's about three-quarters of that parcel, that they would be purchasing for that money for the 6F conversion. And this has to be completed before they could go any further with letting any bids in the process of doing the road construction.
And the planned use for that is?
Parking. Parking. Right. Put parking for the beach and for downtown. Any questions?
No.
This is also what finance was recommending, discussing tonight, and made the recommendation for it on the board tonight. Okay, so there's the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item number four, consider a motion to adopt Resolution Number 299-111814, authorizing the sale of a portion of the parcel number 181-21-0501A, located at 2362 Mill Road to Al and Terra Gokee. This is the other portion of the parcel that would be remaining after the sale to DOT. And we don't know exactly the size it's going to end up, but it's approximately a quarter to a third of an acre, okay? What the Gokis are proposing and presenting is, they will build a building, or buildings, depending upon the final footprint of the property, they're going to put some commercial, restaurant, potentially some residential property there. As part of their proposal, they will also install a fairly large changing room, dressing room, and outdoor shower facility, no cost to the village, okay? That's how they're paying for the parcel, basically, is it's about $100,000, what was the?
$24,000.
A $124,000 facility that they would build for the village for use at the park and the beach. And that's paying for the lot, so the- That's paying for the lot. In addition to that, they'll pay $15,000 cash on top of that. And when the finance committee looked at this, we looked at the overall appraised value of the property, with what the DOT was paying, with what Gokis were proposing, and with the cash they were providing, it reached or slightly exceeded the appraised value of the property between the two offers. So we're getting slightly above the appraised value for, by combining the two offers together, and we're getting a bathroom, beach, restroom, changing facility, without those showers, for the beach and for the park use. Understanding.
Sounds good.
Is it that it's under $24,000 value?
Yeah. Proposed.
Is there some type of contract, then, that this would have to stay on a permanent basis for use of the park?
There was what they would do is-
It would be a $1 lifetime lease.
They would condoize it and give it to us for a dollar, and we would be responsible for the ongoing maintenance of it, but the outside would be condoized, so it'd be-
So they don't have, can't change their mind later on and say, "Okay, no, we're done letting you use it."
No, correct. Correct. So we would, we would quote, "Own it for a dollar inside," and we would be responsible-
For the cleaning and maintenance and everything.
Correct. So that's- Missed anything?
No, that was basically it. So it's a nice restroom, nice changing area, outdoor shower stall.
How many stalls in the restroom?
Well, they gave us, they gave us a plan, which you're welcome to see, I don't know if it's in the package or not, they gave us a plan. It was a preliminary plan, and we asked them tonight to alter that, to maybe cut down the changing rooms and increase the bathroom stalls, and so they're going to go back and look at that. So they gave us a general plan, and ultimately ended up going to the Plan Commission and going through that process. They've also tried to attract a couple of potential commercial ideas, and a couple of those people were there tonight, too, that were not at liberty to explain what that is just yet, until they actually signed some contracts. But they're very, it was very encouraging, they're, they would like to get moving out as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And this is the same, same group that purchased the-
The schoolhouse.
The schoolhouse building up at the top.
Right. So here's a proposal, if you can see that, but it would be a little less changing room and maybe another stall facility.
Stall or two.
You know, so probably two, three, four changing stalls, and hopefully four, maybe five bathroom-type facilities with two or three sinks.
And we also like the idea of outdoor showers.
Yeah, that's one of the things we originally tried to do on the park ourselves.
They also have a very nice, I think, looking, rendering, oh, this is different, it's on stilts, but just from the sense of architectural style.
Nice.
Looks like Center Point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It looks like Center Point, it'd be perfect for that location.
Yep.
Good.
Win-win.
Yep.
So that's some of the stuff we were doing back there.
Well, you can run ahead in class.
You weren't having a card game.
No.
Yeah. Go fish.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Make a motion, do approve, Resolution 299-111814, 2362 Mill Road, sale to Al and Terra Gokee.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Okay, so we're going to skip five, six, and seven, and move into number eight. Consider a motion to discuss and act on the recommendation of the Administrative Compensation Committee to adopt updated wage and benefit plans. Members of the Admin and Comp Committee feel free to jump in any time, I'll take a stab since Zeke is not here. As you are aware, we began this committee back in, I believe it was April, we had our first couple of meetings, so we've been working since April to come up with a new administrative compensation plan. And that included a new wage compensation plan, it included review of benefit plans, we're proposing a new benefit PTO policy, we are proposing a new wage compensation plan that puts some structure in place as to minimum and maximum for various positions. That was the big, big portion of it. Now, I will also mention, this is probably an ongoing plan, it's not all going to be done, sorry, thanks lady, it's not all going to be done this year, some of it's going to be integrated over a two or three-year period of time, and I'm certain that this will always be a moving target, we're going to have to go back and relook at some things, things will come up, things will change, we may have to add, subtract, or adjust various things. I want to thank Joanne Clove, she was instrumental in the committee as her outside expert, and feel free to speak in anything that you'd like to speak on this conversation.
Do you want me to go over the PTO policy?
That would be great, we'll get to that in a moment, okay? And we also want to thank Kelly Hendy from the County Human Resource Department, she also gave us a lot of good input and met with us up here once or twice, and a number of phone calls to look into things and give us feedback from the HR perspective at the county level, and with the legal team that she's involved with, so. Let's talk about the compensation plan first, it was in your packet. Does anybody have a question or comment on the compensation plan as proposed?
You're talking about the compensation plan, you're talking about the compensation ranges?
Yes.
Yes. So as background, the county just recently went through this and paid a consultant or consultancy firm a lot of money to evaluate all of their positions, 300-plus, I think, and we used that as a basis to draw correlation between our employees and their employees and come up with these ranges.
So we also, Juliana researched and we were able to pull together all the other municipalities and groups within Door County, and we had that information also as to their ranges of salaries by position, also their benefits, and what those plans were, too, so we also looked at and took that into account also. And what this would do is formalize, we've never really had a plan, a compensation plan in place, and so we wanted to formalize that plan, so typically, a new, a new hire individual would come on, you'd look at that compensation plan, and they would come in between the minimum and the midpoint is the range that you'd be looking for to make somebody on, unless there were special circumstances, that you may want to look at something different.
What are you, you have a compensation plan, and you've, you mentioned a new hire, putting somebody on, how would you treat an existing employee that's below the, let's say, below the recommended range?
To my knowledge, we don't have anybody below the recommended range, the recommended minimum, you mean? To my knowledge, we have nobody below.
No, we don't.
We think we do. One, that's right. Full-time? No.
And when the county did it, maybe I missed it, how, where did they draw their comparisons from?
They went to a four-county area immediately surrounding Door County, they went to not-for-profits, they went to for-profit industry, and they went to all the municipal and county employee compensation plans that were available. And this is going on, all 72 counties over the last two years have been, had to do that as a result of Act 10.
Yeah, and the summary of that was like 600 pages or something?
Right.
Which we skimmed or-
Which we had access to.
But there's a lot of data there.
Yeah. Right. The other issues were, there was a change in healthcare dental vision cost sharing from 90 percent of the premium to 85 percent of premium contributed by the village for current and future employees. Be a rut reduction in PTO days, and I'll let Joanne explain PTO, paid time off plan that we're going to for new full-time hires, and it will also be, as a result of the compensation plan, the reduction of wages for new hires, bringing wages in the line with the five-county regional area and the Door County municipalities that were studied. And I don't, I don't like to use the word reduction of wages, we've never had a compensation plan in place where there was salary ranges for all these positions, and that's what we've done, is created that compensation plan. So it can be reviewed, it can be changed, it can be altered, you know, as we move forward. It will also be changed on an annual basis, would be aged by any increases, cost of living increases that would be put in place, you would age this plan that same way, so if there was a 1.5 percent across-the-board increase, then you would age all those compensation dollars by 1.5, they would all increase. And that's how, that's how you keep the plan current with cost of living. The fiscal impact, the balance of PTO or paid time off plan will have a cash payout basis annually, and you can correct me if I make, if I misstate anything, Juliana. Just as vacation pay currently has, which should be budgeted as a forward liability, this will be addressed as part of the 2016 budget. Other costs on a forward basis will be reduced due to increased sharing of healthcare costs with employees, reduced PTO for new full-time employees, and regional market-based wages for new hires. There's also graduated freeze in effect for two Parks Department employees over the next three years. There are two employees that exceed the maximum level, and I believe we put it at 115%?
115 percent of that maximum, so they will, there won't be any effect to their 2015 wages, and that cap will go up slightly with the increase, but if it's not met in 2016, they would get, I think it's two-thirds of that raise rather than the full raise, and two years from now, they'd get one-third of the raise, so kind of slowly wean them down to try to get it in line.
Okay. Probably the most, most discussion, and probably the longest time spent with the Admin Committee, Admin Comp Committee, was the PTO or paid time off policy. So I would like Joanne, if she's willing to explain to us, give us an overview of your PTO policy that we're presenting for your approval.
Okay. Part of our challenge was-
Should we use the mic?
Can I sit? I'm young.
Sure, sure.
Sure.
Part of our challenge was to create a competitive PTO, part time off vacation policy going forward for new hires, and at the same time, try and maintain the days available to existing employees. There was an excess bucket of accruals of comp time, compensation time, and sick time that employees have been carrying over and, and being paid out at a future rate, so it's been sort of like a savings comp, if you will. And we wanted to stop that and agreed upon a maximum carryover of 10 days. We also wanted to avoid a large payout during this transition of vacation time or other types of things. So I'm going to start with the current employees and how they will be.
Would you, would you explain what is, what will be, what will be put into paid time off?
Sure, sure. Paid time off is going to be consolidated so that it's going to include vacation, sick time, personal time, bereavement, emergency, and time off to care for dependents. So an employee has the flexibility, they don't have to worry about calling in and saying they're sick, or worry about whether it's sick or it's vacation, or whatever, it's flexibility, they have that time to use as they like.
And it does not include holidays?
Holidays are separate.
Holidays are separate from-
And we did increase, but holidays from six to seven, paid holidays, including the day after Thanksgiving, so that's an increase in number of days. So for current employees, what, what we're doing is accruing, or taking the accrued vacation time that they had earned in 2014 and make it available January 1st, 2015, that avoids having to pay that out. Then they start accruing, and this is the difference, they're, all employees will have their paid time off accrued on a per-pay period basis, and it'll be available to them immediately up to a maximum accumulation limit, which is an extra 10 days over what their normal days that they get off. So the maximum accrual, for the maximum carryover at any point in time will be 10 days. So that's the line.
So at the end of, at the end of any one year?
Actually, it's on a rolling basis.
Okay.
It will be continual.
Yeah.
So as they use some time, then it would be added on, their accrual would be added on, if they were already at their maximum. So with current employees, we took their, their number of sick days, their number of vacation days, and personal days, and they are going to have a comp, a carryover from 2014 of their vacation, and they'll, they'll be able to accumulate their PTO on a, on a per-pay period basis up to the maximum accumulation cap. At, if they don't use any time and they continue to accrue it, that excess will go into a reserve bucket, and that will not be compensable. It's, it just will not have any, any value and won't be paid out. They will have, from one to eight years, they'll have 24 days with a maximum cap of 34 days, and from eight to 14.99 years, they'll have 29 days with a cap of 39 days, and 15 to 21.99 years, 34 days, up to 44 days. And the other thing that, that we did on Patrick's suggestion was to cap the 22-year bracket that has 39 days and 49 days to employees that have already completed 22 years of service as of January 1st, or actually December 31st, 2014. So that, that cap will no longer be available to employees going forward. We also suggest that compensation time balances be paid out at the end of each year.
Compensation time being?
Comp time.
Comp time, not PTO content.
Yeah. So that'd be paid out at the rate in effect at the end of each calendar year. As far as these buckets of sick leave that has been accrued, we're giving employees, existing employees, the option to either use it to supplement a short-term disability waiting period, there's a seven-day waiting period that they could use PTO to, or the accrual, sick leave accrual, excuse me, to supplement, or for five days of emergency leave. And if they don't use it, they could have up to 30 days paid off at 50 percent if they have 20 or more years of service. So, one thing that we didn't discuss about this bucket, well, there's a couple of things, actually, but I would recommend that we put that there's no transfer buyer between employees of this accrual.
I think that was in there.
It's in there.
Definitely talked about that.
It's in there.
It's on page 20.
That's the PTO, not the sick leave.
Okay, okay.
Okay, all right, well, we can, for the minutes, make sure that that's part of the sick leave.
So an existing employee, existing full-time employee, does not lose any time, does not-
They actually gain one holiday.
They actually gain a holiday, okay? So going forward, they haven't lost any days, they haven't lost, right, they continue to be at the same rate that they were at, plus one holiday.
And the advantage to this, the PTO, is that their sick time is also payable, whereas in the past it was not. There was one other thing with the transition that we didn't address, is what to do with an unused 2014 sick time. We talked about carrying it over and not doing that because of rates, and they are accruing sick time, and it will start through PTO, day one, up to 10 days, because they don't, they won't have any carryover otherwise. So I recommend that we just, just have them forfeit any unused sick time as of December 31st, 2014, early 2000, the year 2014.
And based upon some analysis, it was, the committee was informed that the, on average, they use 10.7 days, so there's roughly a day that would be sacrificed.
Right.
Yes. The, the policy that the committee recommended has a paragraph that says, "Sick leave balances will be put into an account to be used to fund short-term disability if needed," or-
Right, so anything, anything that was in existence as of December 31st would fall under that.
Correct. But I think Joanne is suggesting that-
Not just in any unused sick leave during 2014 right now.
You're talking about just this year's unused?
Yeah.
Not prior, not sick leave accumulations from prior?
Well, this will, I'm saying that we only, we didn't address to the transition for 2014 unused sick leave.
Existing banks will be available to use. If they're, as of the end of December, there's time left, it's not added in addition to those banks.
But wouldn't that bank consist of until the date that you guys said, which was December 31st? I'm getting two messages, like, "You're going to bank this, you can go ahead and bank it for next year, but we're not going to allow you to do 2014." I don't understand why 2014 is such an anomaly.
Why wouldn't you just let it fall over into that?
Why isn't that just part of the balance?
We just didn't address it.
Yeah. I mean, I guess I assumed it was part of the balance at the end of the year.
That was my, that was my understanding, too. When we, when it was decided not to carry over, allow a 10-days carryover, it was my assumption that that would just become part of the sick leave balance.
Right. That's what I assumed, too.
Up to their maximum, whatever rule they have.
That's why that, are we missing something? No, all along, I thought that's why that paragraph was there.
Well, the reason I, the reason I-
I thought it was for prior, these buckets that have been around and-
Right. But you were, the transition year would be 2015, so whatever was there at the end of 2014 is what it is.
Well, we decided not to allow the carryover, and part of the reason that we didn't, of sick leave, was because they're going to start accruing it right away.
Why is 2014 such an anomaly with all the previous years? Why is it all of a sudden that, because 2014 is not a transition year, so it's just part of what they've been doing at status quo, correct? So, why is it an anomaly? I mean, I would like that to be justified. If we're going to say we're going to knock that out, why is it being knocked out?
And the only thing I'm saying is that it's starting January 1st, there, there's a difference in the way they're being paid their sick leave, and they won't be accruing it, or it's-
But you're not accruing it as of January 1st, you're-
You are.
Only up to-
Yes, you are.
Well, no, 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 no. The, what we're talking about, this anomaly of 2014, is 2014. That's not January 1st, 2015. It's part of that bucket that you guys have been talking about.
Well, if we were, if we were allowed them to carry it over, it would impact that. It's just a matter of getting from 2014-
But don't we have standards of maximums of what people can take over? Why are we going to limit that? Because that's a bucket. How do you justify taking 2014 out of all the other years and just throwing it away? I don't, there's no justification for it. If there's a rule in place that says, and you guys have written it out, you've taken a lot of time to do this, why are you not sticking to that rule? Why are you taking 2014 and throwing it away?
Because they're earning more at the very beginning of January 1st.
But that's 2015 under this new PTO time and sick leave, correct? So, 2014 has nothing to do with it. That's part of that banked bucket time that Pat Duffy has, eh, maybe I'm completely missing it, but I, I see these two things, that there's a delineation.
It's one slot, but that's the one that is.
And I see there's a delineation, or there's a timeline that says, "This is not part of this." So, this should be part of the old policy, you bank it.
But part of the thing we were trying to stop and improve, and we talked about allowing the carryover, but it, it was just such an issue with the administration and the cost and what to wait to pay it out at, and it does a very deep, but going, the sick time we need to be held right away.
Get in, offset it.
I think that these balances are not going to be compensable, except for people who have been here for more than 20 years. And that, this, this portion of the policy comes from an existing personnel handbook, from our existing personnel handbook. Upon termination, up to 30 days of remaining sick leave may be converted to cash at 50% by full-time employees who have committed 20 or more years. For others, these balances will be there to be used in the case of a real long illness which leads to short-term disability or some emergency, and I really don't see that there's, there's a need to further curtail the amount of the balance. I just don't see it.
Other than, I've bit my tongue, and I do not remember the committee, when we looked at this first, to say, regardless of what multitudes of research and data would show you, that if perspective changes to the existing benefits should be changed to bring them in line with local, state, and federal plans, even at a 75% basis, and then just keep giving more. I, I'm going along with, against my better judgment, quite frankly, this program, and I think it's just one more thing that I don't agree with continuing to exacerbate grandfathering and additional unnecessary-
I don't think we're grandfathering anything. I think we're leaving 2014 the way it is. This policy doesn't go into effect until 2015. So, why should we mess with-
We're not messing with it. If it's, if you use it, you've used it. If you don't, it goes away. We're not messing with it. It's there. Use it. If you don't use it, it goes away. The idea behind sick time was if you're sick, you use it. If you're not sick, you don't use it, it's not there. We're moving to a plan where now they don't have to be sick, and they can use it, and they're going to benefit from the flexibility of whether they're sick or not, they get to choose when they use it. Now, they'll have the ability to use more paid days off than before. So, for the luxury and the benefit of the flexibility to use more sick days when you're not sick, if you weren't sick, you're not getting more sick days to use when you're not sick. That's the justification for it.
But they'll only be able to use any of that balance in case of an emergency or a disability. Now, how can you, they're, they're not going to be using this-
Because at some point, you got to draw a line, and I think the, the line's already been pushed and pushed and pushed, and I'm done moving the line. That's just my opinion.
I agree with Patrick. I mean, this is, this is a culmination of four different proposals. And we started out with one that was combined that was very, very competitive, and then we moved to existing, maintaining their benefits, and then going to, and then having one going forward, which, as Patrick mentioned, is better than 75% of the plans in existence. I have not seen one as competitive or as rich as these programs are. And I have any benefits for 35 days?
Federal employee looked at the benefits, and she said, when she reviewed them, that her jaw hit the ground, she wished she could have as good of a benefits package, hers doesn't hold candle to hers. Federal employee. Usually, it's local, county, state, and then federal. Our local policy is better than the federal employee benefit program.
And I think if they aren't using their vacation, their sick leave, it's because they have too much sick leave given to them.
So, and I'm not privy to all the conversation, because I'm not in the Admin Comp. I guess I'm, I still haven't heard a justification in my eyes for making 2014 an anomaly as opposed to tell 2013 or 12.
I think because, excuse me. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'm just, I don't understand why, and I know what Pat said, but that's a knee-jerk reaction. You have a line drawn to counter what you said. There is a line drawn. It's January, it's December 31st, 2013. And understand, but there's this bank that can only be used in emergency circumstances. What is giving one day per person, as Pat laid out, to bank for these emergencies?
Well, we can carry it over, and then they wouldn't be able to accrue it anymore PTO.
Isn't that what you do for 2013, 2012, 2010? I just understand what's, is 2000, am I reading this wrong? Is 2014 an anomaly? Or am I just dense and I'm not getting it?
It's a transition, period.
There is a transition moving into 215, or to 2015. There has to be a transition year somewhere to make the transition, make the move.
Okay. I understand that. So, was this relayed to any of the employees that this is our transition year? That's, this is where I'm having the issue. If you told them you're giving them this, they get it. If we told them that this is a transition year, things are going to change, then they don't get it. Then I'm okay with it. But if you promised something to somebody, give it to them. Whether it's a bad idea or not, give it to them, then make your change. That's the biggest issue I have with all this stuff, and I, I'm 100%. I was part of the people that started this conversation, why Admin and Comp came up, because I was like, "Oh, my goodness, I can't believe this is what it is. Why don't we..." I mean, it was a finance committee discussion that we had. But if you have promised somebody something, that's what they get. Then change it from there. I, I don't see how you can just say, "Here it is, here it is." No, I'm sorry, we can't give it to you now. And maybe I'm being irrational, but in my company, that's what I would do. You know? And I know there's a very, I know you guys have been dealing with this, so there's a lot more personal onus on it, and I understand that, and I hate poking at you, but that's just the way I see it. If, if it was promised to them and it was never said anything, they get it. If it coincides with every other year, 2015 is our transition year. That's just the way that I look at it.
That's a valid point.
Yeah. And that's just, that's just me.
I mean, sick leave is, is not something that is payable. It's not compensable. You know, typically you-
You lose it anyway, right?
You lose it, if you don't use it.
So, they're not getting anything if I don't, right?
But they're, they're allowed, they have been allowed to carry over or accumulate it up to a certain number of hours or days.
But it's going to go into that account that most people will never use anyway. So, what's the problem? I just don't-
Well, I, you heard my position. I agree with what Shane is saying. This is 2014. It changes at December 31st. That's when it changes. And it is a day or two, and it's going to go into a bank that's probably never going to be used except by one or two individuals. And what bank is that again, for clarification? There is-
Sick leave balance. It's an, will be put into an account to be used to fund the short-term disability elimination period in coordination with our short-term disability insurance policy, or for up to five days of emergency leave.
All right. Then at the end-
That's it. Otherwise, otherwise they-
All right. Then at the end of 2015, does that go away?
Yeah. This will be the last time that anything is put into that, into that bank.
Into that bank, and so just what they accrue during 2015, if they go up to the maximum, they're not getting this plus. If, that's the end of it.
No, nothing else goes in there after that.
Nothing else goes in.
This, this-
Sick leave account is frozen as a 1-1, 2015 issue.
Just for clarification for the dummy here, if we didn't do anything, January 1, 2015, if they had not used their sick leave, they lose it. Is that correct? They don't.
They could carry over up to 240 hours.
But it's no longer compensatable.
Well, it's only, it's only, it's only compensatory to a couple of individuals with 20-plus years of service.
Okay.
So, the other ones don't, they, they lose it anyway. They would lose it anyway. So, instead, we should give them more. I just want to move on. I'm so, I'm ready to be done with this.
I have one more thing that I need to say if we're done with that issue. Zeke and I submitted this to our village attorney, who responded, I want to read, read to you his, his first sentence.
Is this a good idea? Oh, wait. Yeah, timeout.
What are you referring to?
We, we asked him to look at the policy.
Okay. And then we gained other legal opinion, and I do not think it would be advisable to throw one attorney's opinion versus another attorney's opinion to potentially stir emotional feelings one way or another. That's just my opinion. I-
Well, this is our village attorney, and-
Okay. But we don't have any of that information as part of our packet.
No, because we just got an answer today.
I think the committee should see that before it's put out into the public.
I agree.
What's the subject?
Can we take a five-minute recess and have the committee meet?
No, we can't. It's not an agenda.
Agenda?
Without knowing what it is, I don't feel comfortable putting it out in public air.
Can we put it in closed session? Right. Without it being distributed, we could go into closed session. We do have a closed session agenda.
We do that, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. I'm willing to do that. So, is that what you want to do?
Sure.
I'll have to text Paul and I'll see him.
Okay. All right. Then I'll make a motion that we move into a closed session.
One second.
Pursuant, I have to read this. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C, to discuss personnel employee benefits. Yeah, roll call. Oh, yes. Good.
My turn, a second.
Nora's second.
Roll call.
Solomon, yes?
Clove?
Yes.
Baker, yes?
Duffy, yes.
Zachuk, yes.
And Chris, yes.
Do you want Joanne to stay? Yes, Joanne.
Make a motion to go back into closed session.
Second.
Roll call. Solomon, yes.
Clove, yes.
Baker, yes?
Yino, yes.
Duffy, yes?
Zachuk, yes.
And Chris, yes.
We're back in open session. No motions to be made on anything that was closed. Okay. So, we're back to recommendation, the Admin Comp Committee, to adopt the attached policies, updating policy and procedure. So, when we left into closed session, we were discussing the 2014 sick day. Are we all in agreement? We're going to treat 2014 as 2014, and the plan, if adopted, would take place 1-1, 2015?
Yes.
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 Is there any other discussion on the recommendation?
Just a clarification on a reserve account as to what that applies to year-wise.
So, the reserve account, if they get passed a maximum accumulation cap, that was to help with the transition year of 2015, so that in 2015, if they go beyond that, they're putting that time in this reserve account.
Oh, you're talking two different, okay.
Yeah. Yes.
You're talking about the reserve account or-
Yeah. Right. Not excess time.
So, the reserve account is a one-year transition period.
No, it's an ongoing, so anytime, anytime you accumulate more days than above the accumulation, maximum accumulation cap- maximum accumulation cap, those days go into that reserve account. They have no value.
But if they use a day, can they pull a day from it?
It's the way that you do use it or lose it, basically. Legally, we have to use the maximum accumulation account.
So I use my new word. So once it goes in there, it's no longer compensable?
Compensable.
Correct.
I used it right.
But it can't be used, is that...
No, it can't come back then.
There's no cash value.
But even use that sick day, because if... and what's the count for?
Yeah, why do you have to keep them in an account?
That becomes a use it or lose it. So if you accumulate over... that's right, not a flawless. Okay, if you go over... if you go over, I remember the discussion. Once you go over the maximum accrual cap, okay? You use the loss of it. You still have to account for it, but you lose the loss of it. You lose the use of it.
Use, I see. And why do you still have to account for?
Yeah, why does it have to...
Why do you continue to accrue if you're at maximum?
The legal definition of compensable versus non-compensable has to be stated, and it becomes non-compensable once you pass the maximum accrual cap. Which is the schedule that's listed here. Yeah, so it's basically there because you've got to account for it. I mean, if there's a dollar here, there's a dollar there. You've got to account for it somewhere. So that's our offsetting account for these compensable days. Any questions? Do we have a motion at this?
No.
Somebody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We act on the recommendation of the Admin and Comp Committee and adopt the attached policies.
Second.
You want to do it as amended? Because there was that amendment that...
Yes, as amended. Excuse me, yes.
What was the amended?
Joanne just said she had one more.
Well, you can bring it up after the motion.
Second, if you know. Right, you can bring it up.
Discussion.
The hours that the PTO can be used...
Can you come up back up to the mic?
I initially put the hours that the PTO could be used was two hours. That's just based on my historical perspective. But in a small town like this, Juliana actually recommended one hour because you can do like a lunch break in a funeral or whatever locally and use that an hour from it. So I think, you know...
Change that to an hour rather than two hours minimum?
Yeah, and if there's excessive use of use, then it's under the disciplinary policy.
Any other problem there?
I can accept that, yeah.
The only danger there is if they start using it for being tardy.
Well, that's why I said if that happens, then it falls under the disciplinary policies. There's a phrase in there that states that abuse of sick leave, it talks about excessive sick leave usage, and that would be changed to excessive PTO usage.
Okay, we agree to the amendment?
As amended, amended.
Yes. What was the first amendment?
The first amendment.
I'm sorry.
It states that sick leave balances may not be transferred by or between employees.
Right.
And that was... that was...
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Consider... anybody need a break or anything? Consider motion to act on recommendation of the Plan Commission to approve ordinance number 231-111814, many in the Sister Bay zoning code, section 66-0323, calculation of the B3 zoning district. I'll try and... When the state is coming through and redoing the roadway, in the past, they used to take the right-of-way but not copy the state. Now they're purchasing the right-of-way. So there are several owners of property along the new highway corridor that are going to be losing property. And as a result of losing that property, their buildings will become non-conforming for the purposes of changes in the future. And what this ordinance does, that the Plan Commission approved and had the discussions with the owners, was it basically allows you to count the right-of-way frontage and the right-of-way to the center line as part of your property for purposes of calculating setbacks, building footprint, et cetera, so that people don't lose... So people don't... property owners don't lose the ability to continue to build or use the property in the way it would have been prior to the highway being reconfigured. And it only relates to the B3 business district because that's where it's going to be affected by the right-of-way change. Greg, maybe we can use Greg as an example. Would you give us an example of what would happen as a result... to your property as a result of the DOT purchase?
Well, in a situation like that, if they have to acquire, we think it was fine, but there's something they can write away, right? Which I didn't have a problem with from the beginning, I was willing to say we could get it right-of-way. But the state has thought, well, can you give them anything? They want to buy it so they can control it. And the biggest concern was, like our property is a couple hundred feet long, and we gave five feet, and it started with setbacks or density, and all of a sudden, if you can divide your property, it can make a difference. We also wanted what would happen, the argument from the area, that if you still own beyond the five feet to the center of the road, because that's still our property, it's all open right-of-way to the state. Are they all of a sudden just going to say, well, we're going to take that away? We're likely losing great amounts. And each property is affected in a different...
Different way, right.
In a different way. So we just asked to give this... the village to grandfather the existing area for the property, not so much for building on anything, but just if you went in to sell it, if somebody committed, we don't want to develop it, you still have the same square footage that you had before for zoning, for density, much as anything else, if somebody wanted to build that property. Not that it'd change anything, nothing's going to change. It's just you have a newer image over the top of what is now. It's just because of the state buying it right-of-way through there, we change it in some respect, and it's moved on its border and back to the planning commission. If you look at it, if you really work on it, if you look at the fair play, we appreciate.
Right, the Plan Commission met with the property owners a number of times, right, March? Four or five times to get it worked out to everybody's satisfaction. And it just makes sense. You don't want to... because the road's being redone and they're acquiring right-of-way rather than using the right-of-way, you don't want it to affect all your downtown business corridor and change all the zoning and change all the requirements for them. So it mitigates that and allows them to still continue to use the right-of-way as though it was part of the property as it had been prior. So I'll make a motion if we approve that. I bet number was already... I'll second the motion.
300-111814.
Yes. Any other discussion?
No, that was wrong, wrong number, sorry.
231-111814. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Consider motion to adopt resolution 300-111814, authorizing $400,000 in new debt for financing of the beach project. The brief scenario on that one is, this is what we had talked about in the past. The project went from 1.2 down to 400,000. Thank you. Good evening.
Good night.
Based on getting sale of property and also the grant that we're going to get from the stewardship fund, waiting for that to come through, which leaves a $400,000 difference rather than 800,000 or a million dollar difference. And so this authorizes that. We've agreed to it before, this is the resolution.
Substantially less than the original thousand.
Yes, right. Yes.
By the way, I really honestly, I'm not sure who was involved in writing the grant. Awesome. I mean, that is fantastic, and I don't know if Zeke has gotten credit for it or what, but awesome. Like finally, there's money out there, it's a way we can bring tax dollars back to the village. Great.
Yep, great. Okay, so I'll make the motion. Do we approve resolution 300-111814?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you. The next one is a cleanup resolution. Consider motion to adopt resolution 301-111814, authorizing a land swap with the Johnson family of the old ball field and adjacent parcels. If you recall, we actually did this last spring.
It's been a while.
And we made the motion to do it, but it was never put in a resolution form. So we need to have the resolution form. It has not taken place yet. The attorneys are working things out. And to our knowledge, we talked about it finance tonight. Zeke was giving us a rundown on currently what was going on with the property. We have no reason to believe it won't be finished in the near future, but we have to have a resolution in place in order to allow it to happen. So that's the purpose.
Have they got back taxes taken care of?
There was a number of issues that came up. Some of it had been on the books. When they did the title search, attorneys did the title search, there were a number of things that showed up. Won't go into all the details. We're not closed, but a number of those things have been taken care of in the past, but they've not been cleared. I mean, you can pay off a tax issue, you can pay off a lien or pay off something else, but if you don't record it, it's still on the...
Been there.
So some of that is what is occurring. There's a few other details that...
Okay.
The village attorney, Randy, and their attorney has worked that out.
Okay.
Every reason to believe it'll happen in the very near future. So somebody wants to make a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I just have some further discussion if I can.
Sure.
Part of the additional considerations was of that original agreement, was for them to put a buffer zone as per our zoning code. And their attempt at that buffer zone to date has been pretty dismal with a couple of trees about this tall, you know, widely spaced. So... and I think it says in here it's supposed to be done by 2015, June 30th, 2015, such a hedge, but it doesn't define what hedge is, okay? Or what size the trees should be. And I think should in that development agreement define, if you're going to have a hedge of cedars, they have to start with six-foot cedars, you know, to... that's in there. Otherwise, we're going to be 30 years before we get in the effective buffer zone built.
So what I would suggest is you make an amendment, a resolution, authorize the administrator to negotiate the size and type of hedge. And the reason I'm saying that is there's some other issues going on with the balance of the property that we're not talking about.
But are we going to be talking about those?
Yeah, why isn't it here?
We never made the motion in finance, just so you know.
We didn't?
Yeah, we did.
I thought we did. We made two motions.
But I don't know why it wasn't on the board report.
I thought that's why we had that meeting, was so that would...
We did it for the Gopi. We did it for Garrett. We didn't do it for anything else in finance. We missed that motion.
So finance can still go back into session?
Because we need to make that motion.
Yes.
It was supposed to be made, we just forgot.
So let's... it's a public meeting. We can recess the Board of Trustees meeting.
And reopen the finance meeting?
And reconvene the finance meeting to finish the agenda. Is that okay with you? Is that okay with you?
I mean, with our legal rights to do that?
Yes.
Everybody can stay.
Everybody can stay, yes.
I'm going to have to go to the bathroom.
Okay, so let's do this, and let's take a five-minute break, do some bathroom things, and we can all... Because I think it's important, everybody hear what we're going to do.
Okay.
Just a minute, just a minute. So now we're back in trustee session. We're going to go into recess and let the finance committee have a meeting.
I'd like to call the finance committee to order at approximately 8:00 PM on November the 18th.
This is a continuation of...
Of the finance committee that was called to order at about 5:05 PM. Roll call, Solomon here.
Lino here.
Duffy here.
No approval of anything. So we just need to get into the discussion on the old ball field remaining parcel? Possible sale of the old ball field. So I guess I will recommend that we accept the offer for $85,900 for the sale of the old school property and to be developed by...
Not old school.
I mean, excuse me, the old...
Ball field.
Ball field.
And who made the offer?
That's what I'm trying to remember.
Yeah, was it like premier?
Premier real estate, yes.
Premier real estate, which is different than premier property.
Is premier real estate a state... yeah. Premier Real Estate Management LLC.
And it's approximately a three-acre parcel that remains after the Johnson land swap that the board just is in the process of... Craig.
So, and you heard about this, Mary Kay Shumway, this is the same group that they want to do luxury apartments, and they've done this in several other communities. This is them. Instead of doing it at the schoolhouse property, they'll do it here.
So we sold another village's property.
Correct.
We're on a roll. We're on a roll in the process.
The process of that, right. We're right, right.
And it's going to be...
Then the hedges may not count as much because now there's going to be... There may be landscaping as part of that project.
They'll want some hedges, though.
Yes, of course.
They will want some hedges.
Yeah, we'll get it between the two development agreements.
Right, right.
And what was proposed is three multi-unit, high-end condos or apartments.
Rental apartments.
Rental apartments. And they say it's going to be up to, what, a $2 million?
Tax value.
Tax value, okay.
Nice standing.
So I'll make that a...
You make that a motion?
Motion to recommend to the board that we accept the offer for the old ball field.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Someone charge them? Trustees back into session? So now you know what's going on with the old ball field. So it wasn't on here, but we needed to make a motion, let them know that it's in the process.
Yes.
And the... and I go back to my hedges or what we're talking about. And I'm all for this. This project is fantastic, but they're still going to want some type of a buffer.
So we'll put it in the...
And I think it just has to be defined out, you know? So there is no wiggle room. And I also think that in that development agreement should be some type of language with a penalty, whether it be a lien or whatever goes against the property if they do not comply because they have a past history of not complying. Okay, so somewhere in there, we have to...
We'll put in the development agreement whatever we can based on the code to ensure compliance, how's that?
Well, the code calls for that, so there should be somewhere that we can...
But I don't want to limit it to just that. You say the code, we have multiple remedies.
Yeah.
There is, item 12, it is on here, about the ball field for sale. It is in there.
But we didn't... I was looking at... I'm sorry. Okay.
I was going to say it's on the list, just in case.
It's getting late. We still need you to recommend it.
Yes, all right. So we need to finish the land swap first.
Yeah, do it, make the motion.
It was already made. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Okay, so now is your motion that the village board formalizes a previous motion which was made in June of 2013 and passes and adopts resolution number 301, authorizing the exchange of a portion of those parcel numbers, which are owned by Michael Johnson and the village, as presented, that the land exchange agreement shall be amended in accord with close suggestions?
Yes.
Yes.
Consider a motion to adopt resolution 303-111814, authorizing the sale of approximate 3.27 acres of the old ball field to premier real estate. So moved.
I will second it.
Discussion.
Amen.
Is it, is the eighty-five eight is that about the appraised value of the property, or do we know what that was, or...
We had the property appraised, which included the Johnson property.
The whole thing.
The whole thing, and what it is, they took the three-point-plus acres and...
Extrapolated out that part.
Extrapolated out that part.
Per foot, uh...
Square foot.
Right, square foot basis what it would be.
So this is the appraised value?
This is the appraised value.
Okay, good.
And this is a two thousand seven assessed value, correct, or appraised value?
Yes, which was actually...
It's probably higher than it is.
So, okay.
Yes. Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that an aye?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so now is it, is the sentence eighty-five eight?
Either eighty-five nine, I heard that mentioned.
Well, yeah.
It's eighty-five eight.
I think it was eighty-five eight, on the, your resolution, you know.
So it should be eighty-five eight, okay.
Okay. Consider a motion to confirm and appoint President Lino's nomination of qualified citizens to fill vacancies in committees, commissions, and boards in the village of Sister Bay. The only one that we have to add tonight is the marketing committee, uh, has a new member that I'd like to appoint, um, what's her name?
Teragoki?
Teragoki. Ter- Teragoki.
Oh.
Who has agreed, um, to join the committee if we approve it.
If we approve her sale? Oh.
And she is, can we tell by qualifications?
Absolutely.
She's the executive director of Green Bay's Downtown Redevelopment Committee.
Yep.
Nice.
So she's a paid employee, that this is what she does.
Yep.
She records downtown, and she gives us examples.
So we get some professional assistance, but thanks.
Yes, and she's got a real nice printout of what she's done over the past two years, uh, at the off-Broadway section of town, and...
How did you swing this, David?
No, but they, they wanna, a second home up here and eventually retire, and so, and they're gonna be developing the schoolhouse.
The schoolhouse property.
The school, the, 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 the,
Probably Zeke seeking advice from Randy on.
Right, cause the Matt Meyer invoices on there, that was for the.
The water line.
Water sewer line, right.
Isn't that for, he's talking about his development agreement? And they've been going back and forth with Randy to, and his attorney, been going back and forth. That was the last development like last month, I think they started doing that, going through attorneys instead of trying to figure it out themselves. Remember, cause he's like, I don't understand this, it was just too complicated for him. And Zeke looked for legal advice from Randy, I thought.
On the Matt Meyer thing, about moving the water he was gonna pay?
No, about Judy Garrett.
Oh, Garrett, got it, okay, alright.
Now, the Matt Meyer thing was, was Matt Meyer calling Randy on his own about his zoning issue, I think.
Why would we bill for that?
Right.
Why would we bill for that?
A citizen called the village attorney and the village attorney is billing us?
Yes, but we invoice the citizen right back.
Gotcha, okay, as opposed to.
This probably had to, well, this probably had to do with when we were re-burying that line for them. And I know it had to be worked out between the attorneys. And there were a couple of changes to it, and this is probably.
No, this has to do with the truck, he bought property next door to him. And he wants some, he's trying to.
So this is a new.
Want some zoning changes so that he can do what he wants.
Okay, so this is a new item.
Oh.
It's a new item.
Okay.
Bundits? That's what's right next to him, oh. Okay.
What else?
I'm good.
So the same item there, Gage lawsuit, I thought we were done with that, no? That's still.
Well, this invoice is from, the Pinkerton invoice has come pretty late, this is from September, September 30th.
Okay.
The lawsuit wasn't completed by that time.
But it is now?
It is now.
Yes, it is now.
Okay. Okay. The, I don't know where it is now, I don't, I have my, I brought something with. Martha sent me information on the sea mom, I was curious about that. Do you know if that amount is a total amount, or if that's a partial invoice?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm hoping that that is the full amount.
Okay. So I got my two things there, did the sludge study and this one, the sludge study, I, for some reason I had like two thousand or twenty-four hundred in my head, that was the sludge study. This one, it said could be as much as ninety-eight hundred, so if in fact it was only twenty-five hundred, now we did, Steve thought we had a lot of this work done and could help him, and it would be much less, but that would be much less, so I was just curious if that's.
Talking to Robert E. Lee.
Right.
Yeah. Cause I thought it was, I thought it was a maximum of eighty-five hundred is what we decided before he left there.
Okay, good, well, the, and so I asked for the minutes, and maybe that was, because it didn't have a not to exceed in the minutes that Martha sent me, and I thought there was one of those, and maybe it was eighty-five hundred, the one I saw talks about ninety-eight hundred.
Okay.
But I, clearly there was a not to exceed, and this doesn't come close to that, it's just a matter of if that's a final bill, or if it's a work in process bill.
And it wasn't clear whether the ninety-eight hundred was for both communities together, or?
Uh, I don't think so, because it says right in those minutes that the towns would run concurrent, but the town liable for their own.
We would get away cheaper by doing it both at the same time.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But the quote of ninety-eight hundred could have been for both.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get that out of the minutes, but, but in either event, if that's the total amount, that seems good.
We won't bring it up anymore.
Right.
Okay, anything else?
I don't, I don't think.
I'm good.
Patrick?
Good.
Okay.
We have a motion, I believe we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, carried, thank you.
We also have a general fund comparison of budget.
Ten months?
Yep. Okay, get to it. Alright, any questions on the comparison to budget for the ten months, and in October thirty-first, twenty fourteen, for Juliana? Juliana, do you wanna make any statement, or is anything you wanna point out?
No, I just thought that it's time that you had some kind of report.
Thank you.
So this is the most recent one that I've got for you.
Okay. Item sixteen, discussion regarding matters placed on a future agenda referred to committee official or employee. Committee reports. Administrative. Has met, there are no minutes. Administrative made recommendations to the committee structure tonight. Bayshore oversight. Has not met. Coastal byways.
Uh, had a meeting on the twelfth, minutes are in your packet, main thing we talked about, we're reviewing progress on website updating. They finally discovered that we probably don't need to meet every month. Running out of things to talk about, so next meeting will be in January.
D C, E C D.
Uh, the minutes that you have were from the October meeting, I did cover that last month, that was presentation from Glenn Timmerman on the Horseshoe Bay Farms Rescue Plan, reuse plan. The meeting we had this past Monday, or excuse me, Monday, the.
Fourteenth?
Yeah, something like that.
No, seventeenth.
Attended the Coast Guard plaque, or Coast Guard city plaque unveiling. Went back to our normal meeting and went over the budget, strange time, this time of year, but that is about it.
Economic development, has not met, the meeting shortly. Finance.
Need to see what we did tonight?
So, there was, there were, there was, what else was done in open session back there? Those are the three. Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, so we made the motion on Stony Ridge.
Yes.
Here, oh, okay, so.
Just to bring you up to date.
I wasn't sure what the look was for.
Just to bring you up to date. Don't say anything, but, okay, to bring you up to date, Keith Garrett came back to us and said he wanted to go for the original amount of the six hundred and six thousand that we would finance for his project. And there would be basically a four-year timeline of our monies being paid back to us. At a two percent increase on the rates that we would pay from the bank. He would go for the whole phase one project, which is what we originally talked about, which was twenty-four, single family, two duplexes, three apartments, and the row of.
Storage.
Storage, yeah, garages or whatever for the apartment buildings. Once he broke ground on the garages, so basically after he got the infrastructure in, once he broke.
So the six hundred thousand is to build the infrastructure, the sewer, water, streets, curves.
So all these lots, so what is it, twenty-six plus, all these lots are now infrastructure, sellable lots paved to the, for curve, exactly. So they're valuable lots now. And once he breaks ground on the apartment building and the storage units, there is a hundred and thirty thousand dollar cash which can carry that loan for two years, coming directly back to us. And that money's in escrow, he can't touch it, so once it's done, it's coming right back to us, and then from there, for every lot he sells is twenty-eight thousand dollars, so anytime he pulls a permit on a lot, or he sells a lot, twenty-eight thousand dollars comes directly to us from those lots.
That's the assessment.
Which is the assessment, so he's proposing that conservatively, two thousand and nineteen, the whole loan of six hundred and six will come back to us.
Be paid off.
Be paid off.
In four years?
In four years.
And in the meantime, we'll also have two million dollars, or three billion dollars in the assessed value.
Five, I don't know.
Five, it was five, and it was about seventeen to twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, in TIF advantage.
Right, so that, yeah, there's like seventeen or eighteen thousand dollars worth of TIF money on an annual basis, once we start collecting it, you know, probably two years to get to that point.
When does construction start date, or?
He's gonna put the infrastructure in this winter.
Yeah.
This winter.
He wants to start on the apartments and the.
In the spring.
Yeah, in the spring.
So the infrastructure has to be completed before you start.
Right.
We're on the roll. Make it happen.
Yeah.
Make it happen, I mean, all these building guys who wanna do it, boy, get 'em going, cause it's been a long rice bill.
Oh, is that TIF financing?
No, it's not TIF financing, yeah. It's a bank loan.
Yeah, bank loan.
So, pursuing financing through the village?
Yes.
Yeah, but you proved it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Once it's done and he's gonna start.
Right, but he's out there with a pick and shovel.
Right, it's gonna, it'll come back to the board next month, but we wanted you to know that. No, that's great, had the discussion, had the, he needed, he needed an answer. He explained, he got his loan, what, last April?
April.
Yeah. And it's gonna run out pretty soon.
Right, right.
If he can get the rest of the financing.
Right.
But it applies, so, it's good.
And we're first position on the asset, I mean, on the assessed value.
Well, and it's, it's very valuable, but he's proposing to build this, you know, the village needs it, and it's valuable.
Proper, so the tax.
So Shane and Patrick were busy guys back there, so.
I guess so.
That was one of the more productive meetings we've had.
You can move them, an hour and a half, get it done. Three property sales, two developers.
Yes, it's good, it's good when it all comes together.
Yeah. It's been a while.
Fire.
It's not met.
You know, I don't think we had a meeting, we did, I don't know where the meetings, the minutes are.
Fire district exploratory, same deal, right?
Is that thing still going?
Yes.
Fire, it's exploratory, it's still?
It is, yes.
I saw Ken's truck here the other day, and a bunch of others, I'm sure they have had one.
We're getting to the point where they're talking money and assets.
Right.
And that's what everybody's trying to agree on, how they're gonna do it.
Right.
Historic, historical society.
I didn't get any minutes from them, there was a meeting, but I was out of town.
Can I?
They're kind of, well, yeah.
On behalf of Marina Fest, and maybe I can wait till Marina Fest, can you ask them if they have sent the check for the ten percent of their earnings? I don't know how best to say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're late. That's how you say it.
But that's a sore subject, they've got a lot of pie sitting in the freezers. So I wouldn't expect a big check, but.
No, no.
Just throw it out the books and get it done.
Right, yes.
Library.
Uh, the library met on the eleventh, they're on winter hours, the Marina Fest book sale is going to be permanently moved into the village hall.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah. They had some plumbing issues, sprinkler things all being resolved, everything's, looks good, they're producing a new rack for the children's area, and they also will not meet again until January.
Marina, Marina Fest.
Marina has not met this last month, because of winter, and then it's closed, and the unapproved minutes are in there from October fourteenth, the main thing in that meeting is we changed the realtor for our property rental on the boat house from Ron Chris to Chad Perdankel.
Door County Properties.
To try to get better results, and I, it was our feeling that he would do a better job of marketing and getting the rentals into the prime.
Marina Fest.
Glad to say that we have gone from, I think last year was about twenty-one hundred in the hole, year prior was about a thousand, year prior to that was about two thousand, year prior to that, there was awesome budget surplus because of the rain. But we are down to six hundred dollars with still two, three percentages coming in from one bender and two nonprofits. So hopefully we're just about even on everything that we did this year.
Looked bad, wasn't it?
Oh, well.
Subject to further bills are.
Exactly. But I was really excited about it until now, just burst my bubble, but.
But no, but as of this moment, it's looking pretty good.
Exactly, it's really good, so let's, let's look at these numbers right now. But no, I, in, numbers wise, it looked like a fairly successful festival. Hopefully next year we're gonna lay out some parameters, figure out how we were successful, cause this year it felt really good, and people were happy, so it was successful. Next year, we are discussing laying out parameters to say, why are we successful? And hopefully, we can have some, a nice rubric to go off of, cause I think we have some good numbers to work off of, as far as our control, now we can just build from there.
We also have some good, you had some good ideas since last year that didn't happen, like the helicopter, and the cardboard boat races and stuff like that, but more planning.
Yep.
Next year, those are some good events.
So, yeah, I think, I mean, we grew it this year a little bit, next year we'll grow it a little bit more, and, well, hopefully, maybe more than a little bit more, and we'll just continue, and I think it's, I think it happening organically is gonna be a fantastic thing, and hopefully we can stretch this thing out through the entire village, and, you know, have another fantastic festival like Fall Fest, so.
Great. Personnel.
We didn't have a meeting.
No.
I think.
Hey. Take the ball and run with it, that's fine, I mean.
Plant commission, I believe the minutes are in there.
Yes.
Communication technology, has not met. S B A A.
Um, there was a meeting earlier this month, and there was auction of officers, Drew Bedford is now the president, Ron Kaming joined the board, and he's gonna be the vice president and kinda work with him a little bit, cause he has a lot of experience. They discussed different events, and a few new ideas, one of the things they're thinking of doing, I was doing maybe five special goats, cause we do our goats on the poles, and auctioning them off at the Festival of the Arts, because that wasn't really a moneymaker this year at all. And just the preliminary numbers were in for Fall Fest, so to see how profitable it was, they didn't have their bills in yet either. There was also, and then they talked a little bit about getting this, and with the marketing committee, and working with the village. And, and then on the eleventh, there was a Fall Fest follow-up meeting. And really, there was no community participation, there were five S B A board members that showed up, and had some discussion on, on that. The helicopters, I guess at the Fall Fest worked out pretty well, the rides, the weather was better, they figured it probably would've been pretty profitable, there was some profit made there. And I think Paige said that the fellow that's doing that is going to be working out of the Eiffel Airport, so he wants to be involved next year in Fall Fest and some of the other events and things here.
Oh, good.
So.
That's a plus.
Yeah.
That's a real plus.
Yeah, he's taking over for the guy that was doing, cause I guess he's retired or done, or whatever, so he'll be involved in the communities here.
Helicopter.
Yeah, and there was some confusion with the pink hog ball drop, because the F A A, the day before the festival gave the approval with certain parameters on the brown property, and already had been published, they were gonna do it on the street. So there's some confusion getting it going, but there was some positive feedback that, that it was bad.
Yeah, it's good to see the helicopter back.
So. So that's kind of it for S B A for right now.
Teen Center.
No meeting.
Tourism Zone.
Tourism Zone, Zone Jacksonport. This month is going to be just the executive board, last month would've been everybody. Through September, I think it was up like three point four percent yet on the year, as far as the tourism dollars go. And everything's pretty much in line for next year. With the, we'll be getting a full plan in, at the December meeting from the Door County Visitor Bureau. A little bit of discussion, nothing really new, I don't think there was anything to, that we didn't discuss last time, as far as they're getting, they're going to get some kind of legal opinion on the boat slips and that type of thing, whether that, or that, or the campground things would apply.
Okay. Utilities.
No meeting.
No meeting.
Admin and comp oversight. If you wanna see several of the discussions that took place.
One too many meetings.
There were three sets of notes in there.
There were three sets of minutes in there, that'll give you some idea of some of the discussions that took place. Waterfront oversight has not met. Marketing.
Had our first meeting today, very productive, had a lot of good conversation. And a lot of it revolved around the relation between S B A A and the village, and where we're gonna go from here. And also making it that this is a positive relationship, this is not an adversarial relationship, we're not putting a thumb on S B A A, we wanna make sure we're working together so that our dollars are maximized, and I think it was received very well. We spoke about wristbanding, it was a good conversation, good majority of the conversation today. And that, I think the consensus basically was that the village should facilitate wristbanding, because the entities involved with wristbanding, such as S B A A or any other festival or event, wouldn't have the authority, the regulatory authority to regulate wristbanding. So, I think that'll be recommended at the next meeting to be forwarded on to Parks, to figure something out with that. Anything else pivotal that I missed?
Just how to advertise, well, how to market the, whether we're gonna do the advertising in the winter.
It's kind of figuring where the, where the dollars will be best spent in this upcoming two thousand and fifteen year. We got into discussions about the beach and pavilion, the concern with the marketing committee was that the beach and the pavilion are gonna be basically unusable for the majority of the year because of, so we discussed a soft opening for the beach. But also utilizing the pavilion the way that we can, or how much we can utilize the pavilion. But the conversation quickly turned towards, how can we market the construction? And making sure that everybody knows we're still open. So, we'll get into a better conversation about what monies we have, now that we have money. Cause before this, we didn't have the money yet, so now that the budget has been approved, we have a budget, so now we can start talking what we really need to do. So I think it's all going in great positive direction, I would do.
Good. The, so, are we thinking there's gonna be an impact on the pavilion's use because of the beach project? To the point in which you couldn't have concerts?
Potentially, we're not sure yet.
Yeah.
We're assuming S B A is gonna continue their concerts in the park, and that's, that's one of the things, I raised the same issue with Shane today. I still personally believe we need to have an impact on the beach and the pavilion in the summer, this coming summer, and that we need to continue to pursue the festival that we were talking about down there, so somebody else doesn't pick it up, or the opportunity gets lost. And yes, we're gonna have construction going, okay, sure, but you gotta get started somewhere along the line, you can't keep pushing it off till next year, next year, next year.
Yep, I agree.
But is the, my question is the, construction, we've already approved different monies within the budget for advertising and marketing, the construction period, to help, to help the businesses out. Why is that falling on the budget of the marketing committee?
I don't think that.
The marketing committee was.
The marketing committee wasn't aware of that?
And I had that discussion also with Shane, wanting to update me what the committee discussion was, that we have a consultant in place, we have D O T money, we have village money in place to do some of that marketing about detours and videos and that sort of thing. We wanna make sure we're not expending money where it doesn't need to be expended.
And just saying, we didn't talk about anything where money was going, what we were gonna spend, we were just, it was more, it was our exploration, it was, it was an exploratory meeting to see where everybody lies, is really the way that I took it, I mean, it was, it was a very productive, very meaningful meeting, but it was one, okay, where is this committee gonna steer, and how are we gonna roll these dice? And who are the players, and what are their mentalities, what are their thoughts, and it was just kind of more of a big brainstorming, get to know our issue, our scope of our issue, and then go from there. So I think next month.
I'm hoping that Tara will be the large help to that committee, I mean, the committee, first time they're, they're trying to find their way.
Yeah.
But I, like you, and you, was going down the path of the understanding that it was gonna be focusing on the beach, the performance pavilion, et cetera, and better use of village assets.
Yeah, I, that's, that's what I thought we created the committee and put the budget towards, and I, and I've heard a couple of comments at different, off, you know, after meetings or something like that, oh, we'll use the marketing, like one of them was at the TKH, you know, type thing, we'll get the marketing committee and do that, so wait a second, I didn't think that marketing committee budget was to start doing programs for TKH and, and all the others, I thought it was for the beach and the pavilion.
I think it's like anything else, once money becomes available in a new entity, people are gonna throw a lot of ideas up.
Yeah.
And as long as we have these kinds of discussions, at the trusty level, what are our expectations on our thought processes, and what, where needs to go, I think that's, we'll keep it steered.
Yeah.
So speaking of TKH though, is that, that sounds like a neat event on New Year's, that just come up, or have I missed it in prayer?
That was discussion at Parks.
Oh.
But New Year's and Valentine's Day, and then of course with Wendy out there now.
Oh.
As well as others, she's gonna be done marketing for the ice rink, so it's, it's gonna have a much more.
More managed.
Presence.
More managed presence.
And what, what's gonna happen with events and scheduling things and.
So with this weather, or is there any talk, we got Thanksgiving, there could be a lot of people up here.
It is supposed to be in the forties this weekend, yeah, I'm sure that, I'm sure that they'll try and get as soon as they can. And I know Zeke was on the Saturday morning shopping show on W B D K, S B W, and put quite a plug in for the ice rink, and for the fireworks display for New Year's, I don't know what was going on out there, the pass issues, et cetera. He got probably a half hour plug.
Wow, good.
Over the course of three hours on it, so, he's good.
Can I make a suggestion on marketing? Maybe that was my fault for not understanding where the marketing committee was. I, I would like to see it coined something different than marketing committee. Because the sentiment that I get as a marketing committee is, how do we make our village as a whole viable? What I'm hearing from everybody is, how do we make our bayshore and pavilion viable?
Well, that was the start of it, that was the original start of it.
Correct.
If you can think of a better name for it, that's fine, we can alter the bylaws and change the name.
Well, I.
But I, so you get that going, then you start looking at other areas, I'm not saying it's not.
Okay, cause I'm, I'm, I guess, is this the proper time to have a discussion?
Sure.
Okay, cause I'm having, I'm having a hard time looking at taking a chunk of money, however much it is that's decided at committee and then approved by board, or however it may work, on something that's not finished, and throwing a ton of money at something, you only get once to make that first impression. I think you can do, and once we get professional in there, we'll be able to talk about this, and I think these are discussions that are, need to be had, but you're telling somebody to come down, let's do this, there's construction at the top of the hill, the beach is gonna be all tore up and all this stuff, and you're throwing money at an opening event when nothing's technically open.
Okay, the pavilion is open, and will be open.
Correct, yeah.
And the beach should be done by this middle of summer.
But you can't count on that.
No.
But, let me, let me back up, cause this all started with a discussion about having a new festival based out of the performance pavilion. And what did we knew, what did we do, what did we have to do to make that happen?
Okay.
And that's where I'm coming from on the, the whole committee issue was to start that up and get it going. My understanding was that particular festival is looking for a new home, and we have the opportunity to be that new home.
Okay, so we're talking about a specific fest?
Which, which was a way to kick off the performance pavilion and the downtown changes, and yes, hopefully the beach would be done, may or may not be, but it was to. But it was to get things going, it was to bring people down, yes, we're going to have some construction going on, so what? They're going to be working, there's, it's a minor detour up on top of the hill, it's still going to be open for business, what better way to advertise it than do a big kickoff of the downtown performance pavilion?
The other thing is...
The whole idea was, the money was to pay for the bands and the entertainment that we had to put in place to, to make that happen.
And there's also the waterfront, which, you know, the waterfront is more than just the performance pavilion and the beach right there. I mean, you could do movies in the park at Johnson, you know, in front of the marina or, or do something. There's other things that could be done on the waterfront for marketing that's not being done right now, that's bringing everybody into the waterfront.
Okay, so that's my sentiment. Then this is a waterfront marketing committee. This is not a marketing committee for the village.
It's potentially a marketing committee for the whole village. Initially, the money was to put together a reggae festival based on the downtown waterfront, using the performance pavilion as the base for it. That was the original idea for the money. And the money was to be spent to get the right bands and the, and the festival off and going, and it was to generate more funds. It wasn't supposed to be just $50,000. We were hopeful the $50,000 would become 100 or 150,000, based on what we were doing with the money.
Correct, correct in generation. Okay.
And I know it's getting muddy by other people saying, well, let's do something with the downtown detours, let's do something with construction, let's do something with this. It's not what we were ever talking about.
No.
When we came up with the $50,000 figure to do it.
Okay, and I think maybe we got ahead of ourselves by talking about the other things that this could accomplish. Okay, as long as I'm clear, that's fine. That's where we go.
When is this set for? Have we got a date or targets that we're looking at?
We haven't talked about it. So, nothing.
At the same time, I think it would be beneficial for the committee to discuss potential things to talk about or investigate, and then, and to bounce those ideas off the board. There may be some great idea that nobody's thought of that would, the board thinks is a great idea.
Or...
Yeah, I mean, whatever it may be, though, you know, you know, yes, there's a, there's a priority, if you will, but I, I wouldn't discount the ability of what the marketing committee might be able to come up with. I would definitely brainstorm, you know, spend a portion of the time, and, you know, I'd be very interested in what people think would make the village, you know, more attractive to tourists and residents alike, to increase taxes base and, and local business revenues.
Okay.
So, we're not trying to put a, we have, we have a fairly singular focus initially, but we're not trying to constrain where it could possibly go.
Yeah, I wouldn't want you to rename it to waterfront.
No.
Marketing, you know, maybe that's where a lot of the focus is initially, but because the timing is such, in my mind, that you're, that we're spending all this money on it, let's give it a good start.
I just, I want to, I want to air my reservations. I think when we talked about that money initially, we were kind of assuming certain things would be done. And I don't think the understanding is the same anymore. I don't think it says, now, that justification doesn't say we don't need to look at that portion, I think it is. We need to get these things while they're available, while they're up in the wind and looking for a place to call home, we need to get them so they can call us home. I think that's very, very important, but, and maybe this is a discussion we can have on at the committee level. It's going to be, it's hard to sell somebody on a construction zone, because the pavilion is not under construction. The beach is under construction. Likelihood of the beach being under construction, we do this reggae festival, is very, very high possibility. Are they going to want to be battling with that site, you know? I mean, and is there ways that we can try to avoid that?
Well, I also don't think that a portion of the beach isn't, is not going to not be completed by that time. It's not like the entire 600 feet of beach is going to be torn up.
And hopefully, they can, you know, even if it's the yellow tape.
Right.
Rope, I think they probably want to, from a construction safety standpoint, is hopefully leave the area in front of the pavilion, we just, you know, grew the sod, grass, whatever, you'd hope that's not all torn up, you'd hope. But that, that's a good, a good thought, though, from a planning perspective, is to talk with the, you know, the, the contractors, you know, keep it at the end by the silent boards or, or, you know, somewhere other than right down the middle of the new performance grass.
Because once we set a timeline, I think it's prudent for us to let the contractors know that we need to really keep this place disturbed during...
Agreed, absolutely. And probably sooner the better, because he's going to be planning and staging crews and whatever else.
You also ought to talk to the, the contractor about starting at the swim pier when working towards yacht, the condominiums, because as they're starting earlier in the year, that's going to be by the pavilion and the existing beach, and, and the further he gets away from that, so, you know, comes towards August, if he's still working and he's over there by the yacht club condominiums or something like that on the old helm stock, that's really not in the way of anything that's happening in the pavilion or right up by the, the swim area, so.
Well, it's a discussion we can have, see where it...
Yep, great. All right, I have a good direction, so.
I believe a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, we got a lot done tonight.